I know that Arlis and Penny are otherwise occupied today. But we have Jim Barnett is welcome, is joining us today. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you.
Actually, this is Bob Churchill.
Yes.
Who is a board member of the Federation of Community Councils. This is Jo Ellen, who is a member of the AMLCIO staff. This is.
Carolyn Ramsey.
Who is a recent university graduate from Laskasus University. And you know Tim Potter.
I've met him before.
And you know Cheryl Richardson.
I know Cheryl.
And sometimes Mr. Trainee visits with us. And as a member of the Assembly Task Force, we were set up by an Assembly Resolution. And then they in June, and then two weeks later, they set up what's called the Assembly Rules Committee. And the Rules Committee consists of Dick Trainee and Elvie Jackson and.
Jennifer Johnson.
Jennifer Johnson. And those three are the subcommittee to whom we would report before we would report to the Assembly. And this is Amanda, who serves on the Assembly.
Thank you very much.
On this task force. And is also in her day job, a member of the Municipal Clerk's Office. So and then Annie Coleman is over here, who's talking to Dick. And it's Annie, who works with the Teachers' Union. And so the members of the committee included who are not here are Arlistir Dolewski, as well as Owen and Kenny Gottstein, who is on the Board of Directors of the Interfaith Council. So that's who our team is. And today, I know that both Arlis and Penny are not able to join us. But with that, I think, I don't expect anybody to call in. So but that's just for your vision. I moved the furniture so we could all see each other.
Great. And here are the notes that you circulated by email. The limitations thus far.
Extra copies.
Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Hi, Amanda, welcome.
Thank you. I apologize for being late.
My pleasure. We're going to call this meeting to order. And I just basically took the role of people who are present. There were Bob Churchill and Annie Coleman and Jo Ellen Collins, Cheryl and.
Carolyn.
Carolyn.
Get our name tag.
Yeah, I apologize. And the two people who are not here are Arlis and Penny. We last met on July 25th. And at that time, we had a discussion about many topics that are listed in the write-up from August 14th, which is not the official minutes of our meeting. The official minutes are actually, I haven't seen them yet, but I assume there are some action minutes, maybe? Which was we, an action minute, which is produced by the Clerk's Office, means we came, did we take any formal action, who did it? And so far, the only formal action we've taken is the election of the Chair and Vice-Chair and the establishment of a schedule at the first meeting. So today, my goal for today is pretty simple. And that is that we, we talk a little bit about, our big focus for today is to talk about, we're going to hold a public hearing on September 3rd, which is in order to encourage the people of Anchorage to come and talk to us about what they think their recommendations would be about having a consistent process that for a public hearing for the Assembly. And what we want to do at that hearing is actually model the behavior that we would like to happen, which means a public hearing, which means public notice, which means inviting people and clarifying what we're doing, making sure that we have both an opportunity for people to give us testimony in person or electronically, in order to ensure that everybody who's ever had a challenge with communicating with the Assembly knows that this is an opportunity for them to talk with us about setting up recommendations for us to be able to forward to the Assembly. So I'm suggesting to you about our meeting today, that what we really want to do is focus on what we could do to make that public hearing successful. Secondarily, we're going to review the progress report of August 14th, which is the memo that we just passed out.
Jane, I have a comment for you.
Thank you, Dick.
What you might want to do is wait until after the 10th of September. We have a little public hearing on the floor, right, that night?
I'm sorry?
We have a public hearing on the floor right now, the 10th of September. I think if you hold your meeting until after that, you'll have some fired up people.
We'll have another public hearing.
If your purpose is to get people that want to be engaged in the public process, I would wait till after that meeting on the 10th of September. Just an idea.
Well, we have two public hearings scheduled. One is going to be on the September 3rd, and the second one is on.
Don't you guys listen to learn?
The second one is October 1st.
And so, just to repeat, you're going to have a public hearing.
A public hearing on the 10th of September on the issue of fluoride.
Fluoride in the water.
In the water. And we have.
I wanted to know, you said it twice, and I kept going, what is four I's? What is four I's?
That's who you listen to. Some people tell you it allows cosmic rays down to their body. Some will tell you it's a poison. Some people tell you it helps kids' teeth. So we've got a public hearing on the 10th of September on that issue. So if you want to get fired up people, that want to get involved with the public process, they're going to be there.
I, I don't know that that's a reason to put off our, our hearing, our meeting.
Well, and we have two, so we do have one that we'll be able to accommodate.
We'll be afterwards, yes.
Terrific. Well, procedurally, we may get guidance from the experience that you have on September 10th, about people being able to anticipate what's going to happen when they go in.
It might be a fun one for us to watch.
To go watch.
Either person around town.
You can watch it on television, and then, and then you've got the full flavor of it without the full dynamics. Anyway, thank you, Dick. So what you have before us, an agenda that says to, first, we could review the minutes of July 25th, the minutes of July 25th, we don't have in front of us, but we have notes that Bob and I and Penny Gottstein prepared for you, which was a summary of the points that we discussed when we last met. And you'll notice that the conclusion of those notes says that we didn't come to any final decision about any of these things. What we did was discuss how, what kinds of things we should be concerned about relative to sign-up sheet, what kinds of things we should be concerned about related to time limits, what kinds of things we should be concerned about, about creating a public record and, and receiving written testimony that is then shared with members of the public. Because the way it works now, generally speaking, if you submit something in writing, it goes to Assembly members, but the public doesn't have access to any of the information that was provided as part of the Assembly's consideration on an issue. Then the other thing we, we discussed was, should there actually be an electronic public record where all stuff that comes into the Assembly is available to the public then, so you and I can go see it as well as them? And we also then discussed the process for establishing a continuation of the public hearing, and that there have been a variety of methods that have been employed. So citizens have a hard time understanding what the rule is going to be, or what their expectations are about when they might be able to have a chance to, to participate again, and what the rules should be about substitute ordinances. When does a substitute ordinance so change the direction of what you testified on that it's actually a new topic? And at what point does that happen? And Amanda, one of the things, I'm going to surprise you, is that you said you would check with the people in Juneau to see if they've actually experienced, they have an ordinance, Jim, in, in the Juneau borough, where if the, if the substitute is significantly different than the original, then a new process starts. And I had asked Amanda if she would check with the people in Juneau to find out, what are the characteristics that trigger that activity?
They didn't, through the chair, they didn't bring forward sort of a list of like, this will trigger it. But it did appear to me through my conversation, that they aired more on the side of, if it seems significant, then it should begin the process over, instead of.
Let them in.
Or let them out. No, it's in the wall.
Good point.
And so they would air more on the side of introducing it again, instead of just pushing it forward. And it was interesting, because I, on that same topic, I tried to engage in other clerks across Alaska on how they handle, just in general, introductions of substitute items, if they allow, laid-on-the-table items, and a lot of these other conversations that came up. And so I sent out an email with all those questions, and I got crickets. And usually, no response from anybody. And usually, when I sent out.
I never heard that. I love it.
Bugs, bugs, bugs. You know, nothing, no, you know, you could just hear the crickets in the background. So, excuse me.
No, that's great.
And I thought, I think that I'm asking questions, so I'm trying to find ways to rephrase the question, because finally, one clerk did sort of engage me in conversation, and she just said, I don't know what you're talking about. What is a laid-on-the-table item? We don't have that. And then, I mean, we kind of had a back and forth. And so I'm trying to find other ways to ask the questions that we are discussing in our group, to understand what other clerks across Alaska, how other jurisdictions handle these issues. So I think it'll, I apologize, I thought that I would have more answers at this meeting, but I'm still, I'm rephrasing the questions.
So Jim, included in the conversation about substitutes are that, in practice, it has happened that a whole substitute ordinance is laid on the table for Assembly members to consider, and then there aren't even any copies for the people in the audience here. Go ahead.
I went to the Assembly meeting, and paying my penance for being out of town. And they also have, and they had, back when I was on the Assembly, maybe when you were on the Assembly, an addendum. And an addendum is everything that comes up, and I don't know, I don't know how it gets on the agenda, because it appears Tuesday night, and apparently, there's an addendum, I assume, sitting on all the Assembly members' tables, but it's not posted up on the, on the, on the screen. And so there's new stuff. I knew I was in the addendum. The reason I was there was on the addendum. But the agenda that you get out front doesn't mention it. And, and the Chairman of the Assembly reads from the addendum to let people in the audience know, but it's not the, and not a complete reading. It would take forever if you read the whole thing. So there's another issue probably related.
So and, and just to clarify too, it's not only S versions that are laid on the table. There are other documents that are just introduced, you know, presented to the body, laid on the table, that haven't been seen before, I think. I mean, so just for clarification on, on the earlier statement.
So the addendum, is there anything that can't be put into the addendum? If I wanted to slip a very controversial issue into the addendum to avoid public process, I could do that.
Who controls the addendum, and how does it, how does it come about?
You were talking about Anchorage's addendum?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jim, you could add anything in the addendum to the agenda you want. Okay? It's a way, if you want to slip something in controversial, you could, put an addendum to the agenda. The Chairman reads the whole addendum to the agenda, and reads the title of each one of them. And we vote on adding the addendum into the regular agenda. Then we vote on adding, getting the regular agenda forward. And then we pull off things, both off the addendum and the regular agenda that people want to talk a little longer about.
The Assembly members.
Traditionally.
So, yeah, but.
And those two laid-on-the-floor items, as Amanda will tell you, decide the addendum, there are things that we just decide for whatever reason, the one laid on the floor. Then there's no notice at all. It's just there in front of you.
And then Jo Ellen, and then Amanda.
Just for clarification purposes, the creation or the assertion of items that are added, or that in the addendum, being added to the agenda, is straight majority rules, though?
Well, yes, right, it's a majority. It goes with Clerk's Office. They type up the addendum to the agenda, and it's laid in front of us. Then we make a motion to add it into the regular agenda. It takes six votes to add it in.
Okay. Oh, it takes six votes?
Yeah, it only takes six votes.
At the meeting, though.
Yeah.
At the meeting.
To add it into the regular agenda, and then we vote on approving the regular agenda, and then we'll pull off those items that need a little further discussion before we approve.
And some are consent agenda items that don't, you know, that wouldn't require a public hearing, but obviously, if they require a public hearing, they still have a public hearing.
They still have a public hearing, but it's laid on the table, it's the introduction.
Yeah. Oh, it's the introduction. So it's a surprise introduction.
Yes, they're a public hearing item, but you could lay, you could lay straight business items on the addendum that'll never have a public hearing. Some things don't go to public hearing.
Right.
So.
Okay.
In fact, we had an item, we had an item this Tuesday, dealing with fluoride.
That was an S version.
I know.
But that.
But it was on there, and it was not going to public hearing. And Elvie Gray Jackson pulled it off and wanted a public hearing on it. So that'll be on the 10th of September. So if you want fun, bring your popcorn and come down and listen. Because I sat through three nights of a public hearing on fluoride in '92. It'll be fun again.
Okay, so, so it's all the question of people being able to be aware and be able to understand what's happening at, at the Assembly, both from what they've received as public information, either through the Clerk's Office, or in the back of the room for the ordinances that are there. Apparently, addendums are not in the back of the room, is that correct?
They, that is correct. They are available through the Minutes Clerk.
The person who's actually sitting there could hand out pieces of paper?
Yeah, if we'd like.
If he knew where to have some.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, procedurally, the Clerk's Office can start providing the addendum to the agendas in the back.
Is, is. Go ahead, Jo.
Is there, is there a set of rules guiding what can go into the addendum? Because that's something that this body might be able to suggest, that what, what, because we have a public notice issue here, right? So if it's issues that are, I mean, I actually think it violates public notice. Most things should be noticed, I'm imagining that the Assembly deals with, but I'm imagining there's, there's straight business transactions that are in the addendum, and then there's, there could be any item in the addendum.
All right.
But I would be interested in finding out from the attorney, how it is the addendum escapes the public notice requirement. I think that's a question this body needs to ask.
That's a good idea.
I mean, that just doesn't seem right. We, I mean, there's a public notice obligation, but the addendum is not, if the stuff inside the addendum is not publicly noticed, how is it not breaking the law? Regardless of what's in it, right?
No, I think that's a good question.
Yes, Darrell. Darrell is a municipal. Darrell's a municipal amputist.
I hope you don't mind me commenting. One of the reasons I've been sitting in on the meetings, I'm actually looking at Title 1 and Title 4, Boards and Commissions and Public Notice. And I think that is the concern. I've had complaints about Boards and Commissions meetings and the noticing, and, yeah, there are some things that don't meet the requirements. Special meetings of Boards and Commissions require that the subject of the meeting be included with the notice, and I've had complaints, and those notices don't include the subject in the meetings. For regular meetings are not required. But my que, you know, I had the same question. To me, it doesn't look like, if something's laid on the table, doesn't meet the requirements of Title 1, you know, for public noticing, or, or the State Openness Meetings Act, I think that's a legitimate question.
Any other discussion on the subject? Yeah, do you?
Something that the Assembly does right, that I think is worth noting, a couple of other bodies have started the practice of taking public hearing or public testimony at the beginning of their meeting. The ASD School Boards doing this, State Commissions will sometimes do this, the State School Board doesn't. And so the, last December, it was painfully obvious, because there were people that had come to Anchorage from the Kenai, from Fairbanks, in order to speak publicly to the School Board, the State School Board. And as they started their meeting, they said, we, we've amended this heavily, so I, we think that most of you want to comment on something that's different. And we said, well, how have you changed it? And it's like, well, we can't say that until we actually introduce it during the business meeting. So they went ahead and held their public testimony, and we had no inkling what the amendments were going to be. And they, they had advice, legal advice, the same, basically, as long as the amendment stays on the topic that you noticed, it's going to count. The Anchorage School District is now doing this, to where they take public testimony at the opening of their, of their meeting. They do have a time at the end as well, but the Anchorage Assembly still ties public testimony to the motion. The motion comes to the floor for consideration, then public testimony is open. That actually is a big positive for the public process, and it needs to stay that way.
And I, just on the flip side, I've had people who know we're doing this task force, who said, can't you move the public hearing to the beginning of the meeting, so we can come, say, have our piece and leave? And I just want you to know, there's another perspective on that, having to do with time management, probably not having thought out the consequences of content in the process. Anyway, just, that's, that's enough. Okay, so, so all the things that, that we've talked about today, just to summarize differently than we touched upon the last time, is the public notice requirements for things that are both addendums to the agenda and are laid on the table, either as S versions or other materials that come before the Assembly. And the, number one, the notice about changes to that, and how they fulfill the public notice requirements. And number two, the access of those materials by the public, either at the meeting or electronically, if they are doing it at home or on television, are the two big issues. And the legal constraints associated with fulfilling the requirements of public notice about public access. Terrific. Amanda?
I just wanted to share with the body, the addendum is added to the agenda that's available on the website on Friday afternoon before the Tuesday meeting. So that, those documents are available that Friday afternoon, and that whole online stuff. But that does present the issue of, if people do not have access to the Internet, then those documents are not available for them.
So.
You know, there, there was a time when the Clerk's Office did provide the addendum out in the foyer of the Assembly Meeting Room, so that it was available to everybody, just like all the other items were. And, you know, I guess, short of trying to save a couple of trees, I guess I'm curious why that's not the case.
I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you that since I've been in the office, it hasn't. But as I said that early, a few moments ago, that we should provide at the meetings, I think that that's an easy procedural change that our office can do and make that available. I, we've gone through a significant transition in the last year and a half, and I think that we are still moving forward with how we handle things in our office. But I think that I will present this idea to the clerk, and I think that she'll be receptive to that.
Carolyn, and.
Just a quick question for Amanda. There is a Xerox machine on site?
Yeah, I mean, we can always make it available. We just haven't.
It's not like you have to haul it from City Hall, you can just.
No. And we, we can do that from now.
However, I just want to mention that my experience on the S version of Ernie's Public Hearing Bill was, I went to the Minutes Clerk and asked her for the copy, and other people around me said, where'd you get it? I said, from her. But, but it wasn't like she had a stack of them, and was just ready to hand them out. So I, I think procedurally, you can have the clerks affirm that from now on, so put the addendum in the foyer. For.
Foreier.
Along with everything else, then that really takes care of one issue, which is, can people get their hands on it? That might not fulfill the requirement of, did they get public notice? And I know that you're putting it out in the electronic version of the public notice on Friday. I don't know what the lawyers would say. Cheryl.
A related issue is that the normal copies run out, and leaving, depending on the evening, leaving a large number of people without the paperwork available. Foreier, foyer copies do disappear.
Yeah, and whenever we're notified of that, we always produce more.
Oh, okay.
So just, I think.
I didn't know.
There's a, there's a sort of a dance between providing too many that we just throw away every week, and, and I know we do try and put more copies out, which.
I called up.
A hot-button issue, but if we do run out, it's always possible for us to, to produce more. So just as long as our office is aware.
Can you leave a piece of paper that says, if you don't see this here, please come let so-and-so know, we'll get you a copy?
Yes. We can, yeah, we can work on that, and we, it, yeah, we can work on that.
And then I have another odd question, which is, we had talked at the last meeting about having a, like, a thing like in the airports, that actually says, this is where we are, and this is where we are, and the public hearing is happening. And so people walk in, and they can get a sense of if their plane is left or not. And, and that doesn't exist today, but it's something you'll recommend. Is it possible to actually have a computer in the back of the hall that would be available to the public if they wanted to read anything that is in the public record that isn't in the foyer? I mean, just, it's just a question. And I, I'm sure there's all kinds of security issues associated with having a computer out there, or some sort of a kiosk. But if somebody just wanted to race through something that might not physically be there, but is part of the public record, is that a consideration?
Yeah, I don't.
And here, I'm asking you, and you, you work there, but you're not the person who gets to make that decision.
I don't directly know the answer to it, but it definitely seems like an idea that we could present, I think we could present it to the Assembly, and they could set aside money to purchase a computer. I mean, I think we would maybe want to work with the library, so that we could work with some of the security issues that they may have upstairs, and that they could assist us, support us with that. But I think it's definitely a conversation to have.
Jane, we talked years ago about putting an LCD screen, or whatever cadillars you're using out there, so people, when they come in, know where we're at on the agenda. Because now you have to come into the, into the room, and see, look up with the screens to figure out where we're at. We talked years ago about putting a screen on the outside, and they keep people printing off the item you wanted. The problem isn't lack of funds. I guess it will come out of the Assembly budget. Getting the budget aside, we always have a bit about the Assembly budget, so that's, if it's your recommendation, then we can use that. They say, hey, the public said they want this, that's where you've got a task force, maybe it'll give us the drive we need to get it put out there.
Okay.
Because you should be able to have a screen, which has a print button, and if you don't have a copy of the agenda there, just push it and print it. Should have a printer there, so just go, the public can get it.
Being one of those people who bothers my friends who bring their computers to the Assembly, I, my vision is that that one computer would be overwhelmed periodically.
And we assume everybody has access to electronic media, and not everybody has a computer.
Well, it's just a consideration, and, and maybe it's a kiosk that can't be lifted, it, it, but, but maybe.
Yeah, but I think the electronic board for sure, and boy, a print button would be heaven.
Jane.
Yes, Jane?
When I worked in economic community development, we ordered an e-government kiosk for the Girdwood Community Center, which was one of my projects. And we ordered a second one, and we actually tested it here in City Hall. And as far as I know, it's sitting in a closet at the Girdwood Community Center, the second one. And it's a kiosk with a computer that accesses the muni.org, the state website, and one other, and it has printing capabilities. And we paid less than $5,000 each for it. So there are some great, so that one may still be sitting in the, the second one, the extra one, in the closet at Girdwood.
Terrific.
But they are available. There is technology, and they're not that expensive.
We should go find them.
We don't want.
Or just tell people to drive to Girdwood.
There you go.
That's better.
All right. Any other considerations?
I, I really do think it would be a good idea, because to have a board of some kind that tells you where you're at, because I can't tell you how many times.
Waste.
People come in and they go, where are their agendas? You know, or what are they doing now? Or where are they? So.
It's a lot of time.
And if, if you haven't gone there before, and you're not familiar with how the system works, you don't know where you're at, what you're doing, anything. So those of us that spend a lot of time there are often pointing for your, you know, this is where you're at, but.
Well, you don't know what's been skipped.
The, the, you know, if you're there, and, you know, every time I go there, I've usually printed out what the Clerk's Office has from their amendment stuff, so I have an updated version. But if you get the agenda out in the foyer, then you're there. And then Ernie now is then reading all the titles of all the things that are on the addendum. And they'll have a, a number in letter, and then they have the, the ordinance numbers or the resolution numbers. numbers. And quite frankly, it's very difficult to follow that from a content standpoint. So that's why I think it's really important that the addendums to the agenda are out there for the public so they can at least not have to listen and comprehend to what's going on. They can actually look at the list and go, oh, that's been added to the agenda, that's been added to the agenda. Otherwise, it's very difficult for anybody to try and keep up. Tim, sometimes, just out of curiosity, we'll move an S version of the item for debate and for action that's in the addendum to the agenda. If you don't have a copy, you have no idea what we're doing.
By the way, I want to thank Amanda. She, at Tim's suggestion, the Planning and Zoning Commission actually reads the rules of the road and prints them on the agenda for people to see. And that, and she gave, she sent us a copy of what the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda looks like where it says right on the front, this is what's going to happen here tonight. This is how you interact. And, and it was really clear as a bell in terms of, so that if you were a first-time citizen showing up, you would have a clue what you were going to be doing instead of sort of being in the dark.
I think some of the, the most confusion comes from the consent agenda. We have public who comes to the meeting and they will sit through the whole meeting and they will come up to me, the clerk, the minutes clerk at 10 o'clock at night and go, my item 9D4 was never called. What happened? And you have to explain, oh, you know, that was part of the consent agenda, it passed unanimously. But nobody understands that. So how do we...
Five hours waiting.
Yeah, and it happens.
Usually end up telling people, you can go home now.
It happens at almost every meeting.
And so, so if we were to actually take a chapter out of the P and Z book and your experience, it would say not only this is what's happening, but if your item is in this box called consent agenda, this is what's going to happen to it. And, and if, so that they know. Yes, Cheryl?
Well, I'm thinking that somehow people need to know ahead of time. I don't, and I don't know how, all of a sudden we're writing a book instead of a one-page. But if people could know ahead of time that if you want it pulled, you call your assembly person and have them pull it so you can discuss it, right? Isn't that how it's done? You can pull things from the consent agenda, can't you?
For the, for the members to discuss.
You don't discuss with the public. I mean, we can pull something off for a discussion purpose. We don't hold a public hearing unless one of us says, well, I told the public hearing this item.
They pull it, but they can, they pull it so they can discuss it themselves. So maybe it's a bid...
So not that person.
A bid for paving on C Street. And, and the assembly member who lives on C Street says, I'd like to ask a question. They pull it from the consent agenda. That assembly member asks the director of public works, why this?
They don't ask Joe who lives there a question?
What?
Do they ask Joe who lives on that street a question?
There has been times at meetings that I've attended that they have seen someone in the audience and, but it is not common.
We have to know where they are, where they live. We're a big town now.
It's not, it's not common and it's, I think the other important part of pulling an item for the consent agenda, it's for discussion in a separate vote. Everything on the consent agenda passes unanimously and if you don't want an item to pass unanimously, you...
For example, if there's something on there you didn't like, you would call me and say, Dick, could you pull this item off?
Yeah.
And you'd have to explain why. I want to have a public hearing on this and why.
Oh, okay.
What I would do is pull the item, when Ernie comes to me, I would pull the item off and then talk to the people on the assembly. That's why we need a public hearing on this item.
Or if you wanted to make sure that something...
But it takes votes to get that public hearing.
They can pull that item so that it's not approved through the consent approval.
So that there can be discussion.
And then they deal with it separately and take a separate vote on it. So it will come out.
We have to take a separate vote on any item, every item we pull.
So if I want to vote no, I pull it, I pull it from the consent agenda so that the record reflects that I voted no.
Or...
That's about it, because it's an action agenda.
Or it can be something where if you believe that there needs to be something on the record and there's an issue that Dick should be aware of and that it needs to go on the public record so it's clear why it's good or why it's bad, or you should acknowledge everybody in the public that if we do this, we're taking money out of this pot to put over this pot. Then you can talk to your assembly person, they can pull it, they can get that on the record and then they take a vote.
Well, which record are we talking about? Because it's only a verbal record, it's the assembly tape. It's not in, is it, it's not in the minutes because, right, because they're action minutes.
It's action minutes, but it is part of the record because it is on the tape, it is recorded.
And when you pull it down, they probably want to get a complete transcript of it.
Further discussion on...
Could you repeat that?
I have.
Could you repeat that?
I just, sometimes we've asked them to do us a complete transcript.
Oh.
Written transcripts, I've got that before.
Of a particular item?
Right. Because I wanted to hear, each assembly member, what their comments were on an issue. But when you talk about S versions, for example, the O-37, we got the S2 version that passed the night it was approved. So even the assembly doesn't get the S version sometimes till the last minute.
Cheryl?
Oh, I was just going to kind of summarize a little. It feels to me this is another indication of why we need the LED readout board because the consent agenda can be kind of explained to the public in a specific way and things that are pulled off can be pulled out. And the consent can, what was passed can be marked as passed and the consent agenda, anything that pulled out can be pulled down, put on the appointment place in the agenda. I'm sure we can come up with something that's a little more dynamic than just a static vision of the agenda. So I think that would also help the confusion. It leads more to this conversation of why we need a kind of an interactive system to communicate to the public. Because if they're not reading the written agenda and they're looking up there, they see a, now they see a difference, they're confused, they'll either ask their neighbor or they'll ask you. But I actually think it's also really important that at the bottom of this LED, you know, to get down in the weeds, but people should be told who to ask questions of. Because there's also, you have no idea who to talk to. And the truth is, they should be talking to you or the minutes clerk because they can't ask Dick and they don't, they might know their neighbor, their neighbor may not know anything. They're asking them and they may not know a dang thing.
The band whose was sitting in the back of the assembly hall is that you're sitting there and you're the first person, somebody walks in and says, what's going on? So...
Jane, if people walk in and they can walk around the corner and then look up the screen at the top, trying to figure out where we're at.
Right.
Because the screens are old and they need replacements. They're not very good screens.
On a note regarding that, because we're going to have not only our public, our report is due October 8th. Do, would it be helpful to the assembly if there was an element of research about what would be, what kind of thing we're looking for submitted to you through this? Like what, what do we, are the kind of things we have in our mind, is that something this group wants to look at?
Just from that perspective, it would be very helpful. Would like to have that.
Did you ever see what you just said? Or I did what you said?
My idea is, is that if we're going to suggest that they have some kind of better signage, because I think we do need signage out in the front, like if you're out of these copies, please contact, you know, the clerk. They don't know who you are, but they'll figure that part out. And the LED thing, I actually think, you know, we are going to get into a whole gurgle of RFPing this and blah, blah, blah. But I think we need to look at what kind of thing we think satisfies the public as opposed to whatever they perceive their needs are. Because they sit there, they've got a different agenda, right? We're thinking about it for the person who's walking into the assembly for the first time that has the most flexibility. So I'm just maybe adding it as a little bit of a to-do for us, that if we could either get help or get some indication of what, how do we get, what is the most dynamic kind of signage that we can get and how, what's the software? Maybe it's another research project, heard me out of from other jurisdictions, but I don't want to make this sound mean. They're gonna, the assembly will look for the cheapest way to solve the problem as opposed to the most user-friendly way to solve the problem. And I want to choose the most, I want to start with the most user-friendly way to solve the problem.
All right. Amanda?
I think it's a good idea to present an actual vision of what we want because then there's something to go off instead of saying, we think a screen, but if we could find a company that provides that, then it might make it easier to move in the direction of actualizing and getting that.
Can I just also mention that my understanding is that this year, the clerk's office is linking the computer system that you guys use for minutes with the computer system that the assembly uses. What is it you're get buying?
Yeah, what is it?
We are currently using in 2000...
You're getting a new something, right?
Yeah, in 2008, we got a product that's two separate companies for our agenda management and our meeting management software. So at some point, we will go out to bid for new agenda management and meeting management. And now most...
It's supposed to be happening this coming fiscal year.
Yes, and most of the companies now combine those two functions. So instead of having two separate, we will most likely find a company that has just one product for both of those needs.
Well, my understanding is that you are preparing a something for consideration by the assembly in this budget which goes forward. And that it seems to me that our LED board can get hooked right onto that management system for keeping track of the words with making sure that there's a way for the public to be able to do that. So I'm just saying, I know they're planning to do something that has to do with an improvement of the electronic system, so we could just add on...
Do you think that might be rocket science? I don't think so. Tim?
I wanted to go back to something that was just said because I started thinking about a little bit more. When, when we're looking at what our role is and what it is that we're doing, you know, just like a thesis paper, I think we need to be careful that we keep our scope fairly tight. So I think that the reverse of what you said might be true, that our real hierarchy in things to get done is that we take a holistic view, but the real hierarchy is to make sure that the assembly members hold a good public hearing based on a process that's set up. And then we make sure that we make recommendations on these other things that can be done. Because if all we get done is a thing to key so the public can keep track of what's being talked about right now, we haven't succeeded, we haven't done our role. And so I want to make sure that we look at it from a whole picture standpoint, but I think our emphasis from a hierarchy of importance is to make sure that we're recommending to the assembly, this is the minimum way you have to run your meetings. And then how we do all these other things to be friendly to the public and make the process work better are additional items that we make recommendations on.
Fair enough. Okay. All right. Essentially, today we're a little goofier than we have been in the past, but that is, are there other topics associated with what's called the progress report from August 14? Yes?
I have some, just a couple of things that I just want to make sure the verbiage is changed in or some of the things are added, if it's a reflection of the collective thought.
Sure.
Under section F, the process for continuation of a public hearing. In addition to everything that you have listed here, the other, the other really difficult thing to wrap your head around is what happens when an S version comes on and you're continuing a public process, you're continuing a public hearing on now and now you have an S version. So we were back to the whole public notice question again, but are we having a new public hearing? Is it really a continuation? Do we get to testify again? So those two things are really linked, but I want to make sure that the process for the continuation of a hearing is not exclusive, but is considering the notion of the S version because it happens all the time. Then the other thing I wanted to point out was, this is a simple type of thing, but under G, what constitutes a significant change in a resolution, I just want to make sure that the word ordinance is also included there because it's, you know, resolutions maybe one thing that ordinances are...
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did have, I had a follow-up discussion, I want to ask some questions on the substitute nature of ordinances. Maybe, maybe Dick can, I'm going to look at the attorney over here, he may have some thoughts on it. So you have an ordinance go forward and how far can the assembly legally go making amendments to that ordinance before it really should have a substitute versus just an amendment made during the discussion and the process? So what triggers the need to have a substitute? Or can, could they actually be getting around it all legally by just making multiple amendments that night?
I understand the question and I have no idea what the answer is in terms of, I mean, where, where the line is.
Because we're, you know, sitting here thinking about it, okay, so we're trying to figure out where the threshold, trigger point is for if you put another substitute in, how much of the change is out. If you're there talking about the original thing, is there a threshold or trigger point as to how far you can go with the original ordinance?
Well, I think Title 21 is the ultimate example of that, but that's my bias. And so...
Tim, on the S, two ways to look at it. When we do introduce a regular ordinance, you'll have public hearing on it. And if we find there are changes we need to make to it, as long as it doesn't affect the title, we can introduce S versions. The only problem we have is when we mess with the title on it. But if we don't do S versions, then we could take everything that's S version and introduce amendment after amendment. An S version is cleaner for the clerk because, believe me, if we started doing...
Excuse me, I didn't understand the distinction you made between...
If we started doing 20 amendments, she's going to say, I want it in writing. And she needs it in writing. A lot of times, the assembly members haven't done it in writing yet.
Dick, I didn't understand the distinction between just amending something and actually offering a substitute.
There is no difference. It's just, an S version is a cleaner way of getting all your amendments done at once versus me come through with 10 amendments. An S version is cleaner. I use S versions all the time because it's just, I've got a lot of amendments. Rather than go through page four, line 12, I want to substitute this and there, if I give her 10 amendments, she's going to say, I want them all in writing.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that if we go down this path of addressing substitute ordinances, that we haven't, that we haven't locked this door but left this loophole way open because...
Well, if you tell me I can't have S versions, then I'll just do amendments. If that's what I want to talk about.
And that's what I'm worried about. You know, here we go again, it'll probably be worse than what we got.
All, everybody on the assembly will do the exact same thing, introduce amendments.
Okay.
Jim, it was the same way when you were on the body with us.
We have, Jim...
Sure, well, it taught me.
Jim and Andy. Jim?
But I think a lawyer, a municipal lawyer or someone advising a legislator would say, as long as it's in the title, you don't have an obligation through any of this process to have a new public hearing, even if the thing changes substantially. But I think what we need to do in reporting back to the assembly is, assembly, that's not, that's not a successful way to run a public hearing. We need the assembly to make a determination, be it an S version or substantial amending of the original version or an S version. They need to make a determination at some point that this thing has materially changed such that the public hearing process needs to restart. And we, I think that would be an appropriate thing to say here. Beyond the state law, we expect of our Anchorage Assembly that whenever they're substantially changing something even with the same name, process needs to start again.
And we started our conversation today with rapport from Amanda about how somebody who actually has that in their ordinances, how they interpret that. So we have Andy and then...
And to some degree, I think we're talking about two potential different kinds of behavior. AO-37, obviously, there are two really distinct camps. We have different feelings about what, each side has feelings about what the other side did. But again, the example from North Carolina where they take a motorcycle safety bill and start putting restrictions on abortion claims. I mean, to me, that's like massively bad behavior and I think there's an assumption the public would rise up in outrage, but they haven't really. I mean, it's still, it's still in the books. It's going to be a law, there's not a mechanism for someone to stand up and go, hey, this is really bad behavior, it shouldn't count. And I, I don't, and I don't know. I mean, the logistics of doing it, you don't want to hamstring the assembly so much that they can't change a couple of paragraphs and worry about whether or not there's going to be...
Delay.
Suddenly, the clock starts back over and it's going to be a month before they can pass a law. But at the same time, if they really go off the rails, is there a way that, that a group of the public can go, wait a minute, you went out the door and around the building before you, you did this? And I don't know, because it's that thing of like, nobody likes to lose and I don't think we should have roadblocks to just prevent one side from losing. I mean, that's just part of the process. But how do you prevent it from being hijacked?
Then you could file a referendum.
Okay, the order now is, is Carolyn, Cheryl, then we have Joel and Jim.
I, I agree with what you're saying and I agree with what you're saying over here, Jim, but the one thing to... But the one thing to, to note is the fact that, yes, if they're going to start making substantial changes, then yes, it should go back and start the public hearing process all over again. And while we say we don't want to handcuff the Assembly, I think the other thing that that will force the Assembly to do is to not just throw garbage on the table and say, we're going to make this happen, and then start changing it through testimony. I think if they had actually sat down with 37 and done it properly, working with the unions, working everything else, when they brought something to the table, there may have only been a few amendments. But because of the way it was just chucked on the table, what we saw was the outcome. So you're right, I don't, I don't want to constrain the Assembly so they can't get their work done. But at the same time, I'd like to hold the Assembly to a higher bar, say, do your work before you bring it to the table, then let's sit down and talk.
Okay, we have Cheryl, Joel, and Jim, Cheryl.
I'm going to hold off till this topic is finished.
Well.
Well, Cheryl read my mind, and at, at the, at the risk of sounding very Pollyanna-ish and aspirational about this all, we, we've devolved to the lowest possible level of you can just, you put it out, then you change it on a really kind of ad hoc basis. And there's not an incentive to do your work ahead of time. How do we get it, how do we create, how do we remove the, the incentive to not do that? How do we create an incentive for them to do their work ahead of time, create the best possible product before they bring it to the people? And, and maybe the only way to do that is to say, if you introduce an S version, you have to have a, you have, that has to be publicly noticed. Because an S version should actually be what the substantial change is. And maybe the, the nature of amendments, maybe it's, I, you know, I don't want to be completely arbitrary, but, you know, it seems to me like if you have more than six amendments on a document that are other than technical spelling, you're, you're clearly changing what's on the inside of this document. So, and, and, and I don't, it could be, maybe it's, it shall to may, and that's not substantial. But it feels, you know, it can be, oh, there you go.
You may.
So it's, it's, I, I, you know, I, I agree with Carolyn that we've got to create a situation where we have, we, we err on the side of more public, of more public notice than less, and that we encourage them not to do the editing and the cleaning up of the, of the work, not even in real time, right? It's, yeah, it's frustrating.
Jim? Jim?
I was responding to the point that Andy made. We absolutely need to have a rule, if we don't already have one, that says that you can't write about abortion clinics in a bill that's unrelated to abortion clinics. Whatever the title is, that has to govern the bill. The Assembly shouldn't be given the flexibility to do that. But with respect to this, this fine line of when does an S version or lots of amendments materially change what I've already testified about, so that I want to testify again, I think we've got to give the Assembly some flexibility to decide that as a part of their rules. You know, Dick can say, well, if this S version is so different, or these five amendments that we've adopted are so different, I think we need to reopen the public hearing. There will be a lot of Assembly members who do want to go through another public hearing. But nonetheless, you know, like when you're changing something that's complicated, it was a labor ordinance, and there are 10 amendments that have already been adopted, you know, clearly that's inappropriate. But on the other hand, fluoride, it's a yes or no vote. I assume there's not going to be a lot of amendments on the, so one public hearing is enough on fluoride.
No, I, I, I agree, and even if what we're suggesting to the Assembly is not some guide, some set of rules about how we want them to do them, it's the very notion that you need to evaluate each S version individually, of whether or not it is in fact a change.
And I think the Assembly needs to be the one charged to do that. And we, that probably should be our report. As long, as long as they're sticking to the subject and not trying to throw in abortion where it's not even noticed. You know, as long as you're sticking to the subject, then one public hearing, but more, but we encourage the Assembly to consider, you know, when there are substantial changes or an S version has been done and all that, then we suggest to the Assembly to consider on the motion of any Assembly member reopening the public hearing for another round for everybody to speak to.
And we have Bob and Andy, Bob?
Well, I guess one of the things I'm thinking of, because I've worked in labor contracts, as many of us have, there are certain words that justify a locked-in, clear definition. But maybe the, the answer could be in the arena of saying significant, and if three or more, not, not require a full, full majority vote, three or more of the Assembly feel there's a significant change, it is so, and it'll be treated as such, have a lesser, lesser total number. And, and allow the flexibility, but also reduce the number that, that can call that to make it a little easier to use.
I assume that number's going to be six.
Three's now the rule for introduction for public hearing, right?
Oh, is it just three?
Right?
Three to set something for public hearing, yes.
But six could kill it.
It's a majority vote, a majority vote of the Assembly is six votes. A majority vote of the Assembly is six votes.
Six, you can kill it.
And so what, what he's essentially saying is, three votes, it's got to be, the public hearing has to be restarted, even if the other eight disagree.
We never go through the Assembly.
I think it's going to, I think it won't be three, I think it'll be six.
It'll be a seven, four, five votes.
Okay, Andy, you're on.
I, yeah, I like the idea of it, but yeah, I agree with Dick that, and if you apply it to the AO 37 case, they would never have let a rule like that come in because it would have meant indefinite public hearings to them. Although at some point you run out of people for a public hearing. I mean, we, we didn't have 5,000 more people off in the wings that they wouldn't talk about. That one would take a bunch of thought. But I might add vaccines into the four, I think.
I beg your pardon?
I might add vaccines into the four I discussion, because to me, it's the same thing. And if I'm on the Assembly, I might also add a, so it's, it's real tough. It's, it's a tough thing.
I think you just have to charge the Assembly with if there's been a material change since the time you've had the public hearing. You have an obligation to restart the public hearing. And then it's done by vote of the Assembly. So right in the middle of it, the Assembly could say, Dick could say, you know, we've changed this thing so much, I think we need to start a new public hearing because this ordinance that Jane Addix Committee came up with requires it. And then it's a six vote, six vote, six, five votes. I don't know that you could.
I think we're talking about a condition where there's intentional bad behavior, and, and we're looking at the group trying to self-regulate.
And if there's intentional bad behavior, then it's a six vote requirement to make anything else. I don't think there's a way around it.
Where, where you go, and, and this won't fly and get approved either. But that, in order to have a substitute ordinance introduced as part of the discussion that it takes to win the jury, that will never make it on the table.
Seven. It's eight. Eight. Oh, Jesus. Okay.
So we have, we let these people in, and we trust that they will do what they take the oath to do. And I guess the ultimate thing is that we still have is that I'd like them to recognize that, I, I want them to say that, no, this is not a changed amount enough, and have to put that on the record, even vote on it. And it, and if they screw up, that's on the record, and then the voters can, can do their thing.
But, but Tim, it takes two people to make the motion, motion and the second. You know, Dick can say, and Elly can second and say, I think that we've changed this so much that we need to have a new public hearing, and we need to let the people who already spoke speak again. And if nine people vote against Dick and Elly, then we know they're bad behavior, but it's on the record.
It's on the record.
I think even having the conversation that S versions might be substantial changes, that the whole notion that you should be maybe thinking about getting the public to talk to you one more time is a whole, it's a whole quantum mind shift. Even if that's the shift we have, it's, it's the presence that the, that this S version has the potential, S versions, amendments, whatever it is, has the potential to abuse the public in this process. And that, that the public, being their ability to access you through this experience is something that two members of the Assembly can call and say, should we be checking back with them on this? Because right now, it's not even raised as a question. It's a foregone conclusion.
That would be a neat thing for us to add during the recommendation, and then they have to vote on it.
I, I have a question about the rules of the Assembly. I know that the, the rules of the state legislature are that they have to be within the title, that the content has to be. But I didn't know that that was applied to the, to the municipal ordinances as well.
We just have to make sure that what's in the ordinance is relative to the title. We can't, for example, add abortion or fluoride. You know, that'll never happen, it'll never fly. The public, if we ever do that, has a referendum. I think, Andy, you have a referendum, don't you, to get rid of the ordinance?
It's procedure, I don't, I don't know if it's law, I could grab code and look it up.
Is there, is there a, is there, are the procedures of the Assembly written down someplace?
In ordinance?
No, 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 I'm asking a very straight question.
Yeah, no, I.
Is there, in, I mean, it's not an ordinance.
So I know that, I guess maybe I should rephrase what I said, I know that we do that by practice, but I don't know if it's directed by code, I would have to.
No, it's not, I mean, I don't, I believe it is not. I don't believe that anything is directed by code having to do with how it happens. Is that, that's, so we don't have a rules of procedure other than practice?
No, we do have a Rules Committee that I have to head up, and we're going to be working on this. We had a Rules Committee, we're going to be working on this.
So just one, because I think I'm tracking, it is not written in the city code that we have a single subject rule.
Correct.
As we do at the state of Alaska.
Correct.
I think the city, no, 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 I think if it's in Title 29, every city is obligated to follow it.
Oh, but it isn't, I mean, excuse me, but it's my opinion, I'm.
Well, I'm trying to look, but I.
We have an Ask Dennis Wheeler.
I brought my computer, but I'm just not getting on this thing yet.
Well, I, I remember a separate title that lists how long you can testify for in the, in the code.
We just have rules.
And I don't remember what else is in there, but.
I'm sorry, I might have taken a something, I just wanted to know if we had a rule book anywhere that articulated.
There is no rule book anywhere. It's just tradition and custom, that we give you three minutes. Sometimes Assembly chairmen come in and they set the rules. For example, when I was chairman, you had three minutes to testify, and you could only testify once, and I would set debate to an hour. And every senator could only enter debate twice, I just gave a record how many times people made it. But I had the votes to enforce that, and I did it. It's up to the chairman as to how they want to run the meeting.
But I do, I do know that the discussion about if having it be in the title and having to correct the title has come up multiple times at Assembly meetings.
Julie will bring it up, or Dennis.
And typically, typically Dennis and/or previous municipal attorneys have addressed it. So if you, if I, if, if there was an ordinance going forward that said, for single family, two-family, multifamily, didn't include commercial, things were going to be changed, and then there was something put forward to put commercial in, you'd have to go back and put that in the title, re-advertise, bring it back.
Amanda, could I ask you to please ask Julie if the single title rule exists in law? And if so, does it come from Title 29 or some other one? Just, I just, just that.
So is it binding, is it binding on the Assembly?
How, what is the legal origin of that for us? But, but I do think it is important to note that the procedures of the Assembly can change from chair to chair depending upon who's in the chair and how many votes they've got to be able to change the rules, and so.
Do you have any fundamental precedents?
So what I, what I think we have is the opportunity to, to provide the guidance to the Assembly about what the procedure should be regardless of who is the chair.
Ma'am, I have a one and thirty, I have two.
Thank you for your time, thank you, Bob, we really appreciate. I, I have given you a, I laid on the table, I apologize, a press release.
Yes, I have.
That I would like you to read, and if you have any objections, my goal is that Amanda issues it tomorrow so that people have, at least, the press isn't going to cover us, but it would be nice if the public had a clue when we're having a public hearing, which is set for September 3, and why we're having a public hearing, which is solicit their ideas about stuff. Yes, ma'am?
Could I suggest perhaps releasing it on Monday so it doesn't die with Friday weekend news?
You bet. Therefore, if you could give us comments by Monday that any changes you would like, okay? That would be really appreciated, thank you, Bob.
And I'll tell you, time to people that are totally thrilled about the public hearing piece of this. But I think everybody will see this time.
Can I go after another topic?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of wrapped up that.
Can I, can I just, I just.
Yes, go ahead.
I have one more on that. Dick has said that it's basically a free throw, and there are no fundamental rules. And yet, I received just now that several cities in this, in this state have adopted the rules of the road. And even simple rules like what Kodiak Island did, which is just four rules, I mean, that should be an ordinance, shouldn't it?
Well, Ernie gave us rules, he became chairman.
But it changes from chair to chair.
But we need, maybe that's something we should conclude.
Maybe Robert's rules is the.
You guys need to have rules that are in ordinance, so a person can read those rules and know three-minute limit, manner of addressing the Assembly.
But here's, here's Anchorage's rules in 231-40.
This is slightly off topic, but.
But that's what Ernie proposed, right?
No, I don't think so, that's in, that's in code today.
Oh, okay, so we do have to.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm missing that information as well.
I believe we have in code a number of rules, they do not cover the things we're talking about here. So we are, I believe, we're talking about amending Code 2.30.
I think that we do have that.
Title 2.30.
Two, and I can go grab a code book, but.
Which is what?
It's, it's the Title II of the Anchorage Code.
Which says what, I mean, no, what's the title of that?
A through G, it says, rules of procedure for Assembly. 2301-40 is public testimony on proposals before the Assembly with items A through G.
Could we copy some of this, convey it to everyone?
Yeah, I can copy it, and then I can also add it to the email. I just had a, I had a thought. It seems like we still have a lot of discussion, and we're meeting September 3 for the public hearing. Will we just be communicating by email before then? Should we maybe meet for an hour before our public hearing, just to make, this is just a signal?
Confused about the structure is going to be of this public hearing at this point, yeah.
And we had talked about providing some written document for them to react to.
Well, actually, once upon a time, we talked about saying, this is what our thinking is. And then they said, no, don't do that, have two public hearings. One is, what's your thinking is September 3, and on October.
Here's our response.
Third, this is what we're coming up with in terms of our recommendations. Would you, how do you respond to that? And so that's how we ended up with two public hearings. But the first one would be, the topic is, how do you feel about the public hearing process? And what are your ideas for, that we should consider in our recommendations to the Assembly?
But if the Assembly has an ordinance on public hearings, we need to have everybody have that, because that's what we're doing, is amending that.
So I will recommend, I'll just go copy this really quick. I can just run really quick and copy this, but then I'll also send it to everyone by email. And then I think that we can attach it to the press release so that everybody understands that this is.
We have to know, sorry.
Okay, I guess maybe I'm proposing, we could consider.
What, what I, what I really want and then to say to the public is, our job is to make some recommendations to the Assembly, but I don't want them to actually devote so much time to changing line 42 as much as saying, this was my experience and I didn't like it, so is there some way to fix that? And I'm, and I'm saying, I'm just saying, people know what their experience is. They might not know how their experience applies to that piece of paper. And I, so I don't want to restrict their thinking to that. I want them to articulate what their goal is. And, and the things I have heard people say to me are, I want it to be consistent from time to time to time. I want to know when I'm going to be heard, when, when I see it on the agenda, and I want to know if I can't make it to the meeting, is there some way for me to get my two cents in? And so I don't want them to read that. I want them to say, I, I mean, because we might be able to apply what they've said to the, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
But, but it's odd to me that we got to the third meeting before we found. But, but it's odd to me that we got to the third meeting before we found out, before I found out.
I was shocked when I read it at the Assembly meeting that night because I thought it would have been part of the offering, the content of backing up this S version, your version that we're looking at.
So what I think we should present to the people to come to the Assembly is the establishment of a task force. And that resolution says what we're trying to do is figure out the public hearing process, and that that is our charge as provided to us by the Assembly as opposed to Title II.
I'll just be right back.
I still have a topic I'd like to raise.
Yes, ma'am.
I hope it's a simple one, and it'll kind of be an up or down, but on the notes, the August 14 notes, page two, written testimony, let's see, in the bottom paragraph talks about, members also discussed the question testimony to be submitted early enough to allow reasonable time for Assembly members to review it prior to the meeting, such as 48 hours, and also time to review the testimony of others. I think that's great. You can have a 48-hour, for instance, cutoff to, you know, the clerk is responsible for the turnaround, and our Assembly people are responsible for having tried to read it. But I would also make sure that later submissions are allowed. For instance, as you're at the public hearing, you can, so it's just that you're more guaranteed to have be heard if you meet the deadline, but you're still allowed to.
This was Bob's notion? I completely disagree with it.
Oh.
I just want you to know, I mean, it would be nice if people got it in advance, but I don't want them to be restricted from communicating with the Assembly because of some silly timeframe.
You can put in best efforts.
Sure.
But also the clerk.
Then you try your best to get it in by 48 hours, but if it doesn't work, you know, you can still consider it.
But the clerk's responsibility, right? We're talking about tasking them with creating a public record so that all of us can see the comments that are coming in. And I don't think it's reasonable for them to have to produce my comments that I submitted five minutes before the meeting.
But I think that it should be able, I mean, electronically, to be able to say, I send my notes in electronically and they appear as part of the public record. If it's a piece of paper that requires somebody to scan it and put it up, that's a different question. And a piece of paper, I don't think they should be initially have to respond to. But if it's electronic, I think it can happen simultaneously.
Joel, what do you think? Oh, I don't know. I was just going to remark that public notice is usually 80, 96 hours before the Assembly meeting. And this deadline is 48 hours. So it actually is not functional as a, as a function of the public notice to the actual deadline we've created. You publicly notice on Friday, and you have a meeting on Tuesday.
His goal was that they would have a chance to read it before they decided. That was his objective.
Right, and that's noble.
No, Millie, Kelly.
Okay, I did do some research. I made a bunch of phone calls to the EPA to try and find out how their whole system works.
Good.
And after chasing my tail and watching them chase their tail, I came to the conclusion that there is absolutely no way in the world that this administration or any administration is going to pay that much money to try and do all this. However.
And let me explain that what I said, my ideal, I know she was, in the EPA, in the National EPA Evaluation of the Pebble Commons on the watershed study, they were actually posting them in real time. Like, if I sent it and I could see it, it was from all over the country.
This is possible.
Wow. Anyway, so that was my fantasy land.
Yeah, well, and I think it was a great one, but trying to bring it back down to what we can feasibly do, two things that I came up with is, one, is on the Assembly website where it lists all of the Assembly members' email addresses and the municipal clerk's email address, I believe there should be writing in there or a direct link to the writing or from the writing that says, submit public comment here, click. Because right now, unless you know to submit it to the clerk and you submit it to your Assembly person, you still think it's become public testimony. So literally have that in writing.
Click.
And then the other section to that is when you look at the municipal website, on the right-hand side, it says that you, here's where you can get your agenda, here's where you can get the audio from previous things, here's where you can get, you know, the different lists. There could be another icon installed that says, here is submitted public testimony. Everything has been submitted electronically to the municipal clerk or to that direct link can automatically post at the same time, so it's almost real time, kind of automatically post to over here, where you can click on it and get what's being submitted by other people.
Or has been submitted or is being?
What did you say? Has been.
Has been.
That's great. I mean, simple.
Yeah, the Muni website's a little bit of a hot mess all the way around, just trying to access it. It's crazy. I was trying to find AO 37, the S2 version, which now I have to provide to every single petitioner in this city. So I have to produce, you know, how many hundreds of copies of AO 37. I was trying to find it on the website, and I can't find it on the website because when you go to the ordinances, they don't list 2013 ordinances anywhere. You can't find them, so I had to search it and then get into this search document. So I can't, if I can't find AO 37.
Her most important document.
You can't find a link to any of this year's resolutions, you know, I can't find it.
I am sure there's a human being in the close office who can help you with this.
I'm just certain we shouldn't have to call her.
I agree with you, but here she is.
Yeah, just making the observation that there's a bunch of ways that the website is less than intuitive and better for.
And now we're talking about changing your website.
I knew there was reason I left, and I shouldn't have come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Did you give a copy to Jane?
Oh, yeah, I have other ones.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're almost out of time here. The notion was that our public hearing is scheduled for September 3rd. I know Andy has conflict right at the beginning, but, and we're scheduled to meet at 6:00. Do we want to meet prior to that, in which case we could meet at the Assembly chambers at 5:00? Or?
What is the purpose of the meeting?
Amanda, the purpose of the meeting before the Assembly, before we have a public hearing, do you want to do that a day before, or do you want to do that hours before?
Oh, the meeting, the pre-meeting, pre or during meeting? It seems as though we could just meet before the meeting. And what is the purpose?
To gather thoughts.
Actually, procedurally, here's what my recommendation is about what we do is, we give them the, with the task force, we give people, as part of the public notice, the directive, we give them the resolution, we set up the task force, and then we invite people to tell us what they think, and then we hold the public hearing that says, would anyone like to testify? And we record it, and we take minutes on it, but you have.
No, that's fine. I mean.
Then we review the minutes, and then we start to develop our own recommendations, and you assure the people, you'll get another crack at it once you see what we're proposing.
And I guess part of what we need to talk about at 5:00 is how much are we going to engage with the public to testify?
First question.
And what's your thinking?
It would, you know, if we got into a full, almost like they're in the work session type of thing, it would turn into a.
Diary book.
Well, yeah, if only six people show up, that might be okay. If 100 people show up, it wouldn't be productive to get into a long thing. We'd try and, try and extract as much information out of them as possible.
You now know exactly how the Assembly feels when 100 people show up. I agree. Comments, considerations? Amanda?
We've reserved the Lusac Library, and I think the conversation is, do we want to just audiotape the meeting? Do we want to videotape it? There is expense that goes along with that. Do we want to air the meeting on Channel 10? Do we want to have it closed captions? I can provide the cost that those entail.
I'd say.
For those individual.
If we're brave Assembly directors who brought us all here, we want to do. I want to record it so the public can see it and hear it on TV.
Okay.
Record it, not just audio, but visually.
Okay, there you go.
Are we going to broadcast at lifetime or just record?
Lifetime.
Okay.
Fantastic.
I agree.
I'm modeling behavior we're looking for.
Not terminated longer, but I'll ask that he.
So I will work with.
I'll ask Ernie also, by the way.
He's down at Irwood today, so I want to call him tomorrow.
Considerable cost with all those services.
That was interesting.
Especially the closed captioning and stuff, so.
Closed captioning.
We pay for the service of it being a closed caption.
Type script at the bottom of what's being said.
We can't hear.
Okay.
So.
And do you want to give us a menu of choices, or I don't?
I can put together all of the costs, and then.
For instance, planning and zoning has audio only, right? Or do they even have audio?
I, I'm not aware of what other.
They tape it.
People have, but, you know, we do.
We don't.
Audio taped anyway.
Okay. I thought that Cheltenham was public access.
That is, but we pay to have.
The crew there.
Yeah, and then we have to upload it to the, our current meeting that hosted on the web and all that stuff, so there is.
Data details.
Okay. Number one, we want to record it. Number two, we want, we want people to be able to see it on TV.
Don't we have Channel 10, the city channel on GCI free?
Yes. That is not part of the cost I'm discussing, though.
It's free to the public to watch it. There's a cost to broadcast is what I'm hearing. I forgot the cost, let me talk to Ernie and Jane. Let me see if you can, you can pay for it as a authority chairman.
You know, Jane, I think if we're really going to do what we're supposed to be doing to analyze and get public input and everything on the public hearing process for the Assembly, I don't think we can just do audio or video. I think it needs to be broadcast, and it needs to be closed captioned so we can clearly model how it's supposed to be done so that we've gone to the greatest extent we can to make it available and out there for the public.
I agree.
I agree.
See, we haven't said about committee like this in years. We need the public to understand how important what you guys do is to the Assembly.
The importance is that validates that was an issue.
I agree.
Once upon a time, we said, if we had an overflow crowd, how did we want to manage it? And so the question for the group is, do we want to put a time limit on people?
I think we should run it the way Assembly runs a meeting, and that is a three-minute time limit so that they come up, they're concise, they get their statement done, and we don't wind up with a run-on half hour from one person.
But if we have specific questions, we can do that.
Okay, and then the other consideration was, if we actually had an overflow crowd, do we want to talk about a process of where we would continue?
What are you going to do about an overflow crowd when the fluoride comes up?
He doesn't share it anymore.
They will simply wait until they, their seats, and they can come and take it. We are required by the fire marshal to have a static amount of people in that room. Signs up there, says how many people we can have in. So if some testify, others can take their seats.
It's a continuation.
I'm really not afraid of this particular problem. I'm not afraid of overflow crowds unless I'm misreading this.
No, no, no.
It's just a firework.
I mean, that's a problem to have to resolve.
There's always the Wendy Williamson.
Wilde Marsden.
I got the W.
And they, they used to have. But again, then Jane, you'd have to rent the Wilde Marsden Theater also.
Should we have a signup list for crowd control? If there are 10, but if there are 50, should we have a signup sheet?
No, no, the exact same problem that the Assembly faces, which is assessing the crowd to decide the process. Should we decide the process first, or should we? And here's one thing I think is, I think we should have a signup sheet simply so we have a way to communicate with people who talk to us.
As long as signup sheets aren't exclusionary, I have no problem with signup sheets.
Well, now, the signup sheet, you see, to communicate with, it's only the name and that, or not even the address, it's just the name, which they have to give to the clerk and spell it out. So the communication's right there already.
Okay.
So are there, I don't mind a signup sheet for crowd control.
And when I say communicate, here's what I would like to do. I would like to actually send a packet of information to everybody who comes to testify on the 3rd that says, this is what our recommendation is going to be. We're going to have another public hearing. We can take a look at it and come back.
Oh, then that's a different signup sheet.
I'm just telling you, that's what I want to do.
That'll be on the signup sheet. If you wish to have a packet, please give us your mailing or email, right?
My preference would obviously be to send it electronically.
Please give us your email address.
And it brings up if there is an outpouring on signup sheets. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the bargaining units rented Wilde Marsden.
Yeah, did we rent it? We just had it. We had to work that out.
I think it had to be rented, but the reality is that the Assembly has reason to think 500 people are coming. It seemed, I can understand why they don't have it every Assembly night and have a projector set up. There were quite a few people seated over there watching everything on a projected image. And if you know you're going to be flooded, that seems like a reasonable thing to do. In this case, because it was a bargaining unit saying the wherewithal to make it happen at the same time, but the reality is you shouldn't have to if that many people are coming.
That's good for me.
Overflow capacity, what do we?
That becomes a scheduling rental issue with the library then.
It's an interesting thing because the bargaining units took on the load of handling the overflow for the Assembly, and they did a nice job, but at the same time, there were some people that were offended by that because they're going, why should I have to talk to one of these bargaining unit people to get permission to speak? It's like, well, you don't. They're just, just kind of trying to manage.
And the kicker is, is that either the Assembly is going to have to block out every Tuesday scheduled for their meetings for the Wilde Marsden, and Wilde Marsden won't be able to book that room, which means they'll probably need to somehow figure out how to get into budget, or there's going to have to be, because Wilde Marsden might be booked three months in advance for a night, and it happens to correspond with fluoride that magically appears on the agenda.
Have they ever been surprised by an overflow crowd? Have you ever had an overflow crowd when you did see it coming?
The worst was 37, okay? You guys had that under control. You guys did a great job, and they could come and testify. I know some people didn't like, had to talk to bargaining, but you could see the numbers that were on the wall, told what group could come and testify. You could do better than we could have done. You did a good job.
And you knew an overflow crowd was coming.
We knew it was coming.
And?
Make out overflow crowds on human rights questions and on Title 21, and on.
64, the overflow was open.
I think that's something between the Assembly Chair, the Administration, and the clerk's office when you review and establish the agendas that you can probably take pretty good.
Well, normally, the Assembly Chair and a clerk's office meets with the Administration on the Monday before Tuesday Assembly meeting, and that's what you go through the entire agenda.
It's too close.
I don't sense we're going to have an overflow crowd.
I don't either.
We're talking about this as an issue for participation.
You know, again, that's a six-foot deal, but in our case, I don't think we're going to have an overflow crowd, so I think the standing rule, which is fire marshal, otherwise, people wait for an empty seat, that should be our rule.
We do have the media room there, too, that holds about 15 people, so I've opened that up before, too, but we've had 15 out there go media because the media doesn't show up anymore.
So discouraged.
They don't care.
Okay.
It's a quiet location.
Any other issues? I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry we ran over, and we'll see you on the 30th at the Assembly Hall, and if you come at 5:00, you start at 6:00.
On the 3rd.
I'm sorry, I meant the 3rd.
We're going to meet at 5:00.
We're having the pre-meeting, remember we just discussed that.
Can we meet in the Assembly?
We'll meet in the Assembly conference room, and I'll notice this meeting, too.
In the Assembly conference room in the library.
You could go in the back room. You could go in the back row.
And, and if you have comments.
Trick or treating for supper?
I will send you the, the press release electronically, and if you have comments, please get them to me and Amanda by Monday.
A technical question. I'm going to have questions from folks in the bargaining units. Whether we'll also be taking written testimony. We will be taking written testimony, right? Okay, because we, undoubtedly, we'll have some people who will physically show up, but I'm imagining some of the business agents will want to actually submit Friday.
And the press release I wrote said, if you cannot participate in the public hearing, please submit ideas to the municipal clerk's office by email to you or in person. If they want to send, give us some paper at senior.
One quick thing, since we're going to meet at 5:00, does everybody want to throw in $5 and we'll get pizza?
Yes, that's a good idea. I do.
Does it have to be pizza?
Do you want the money in the pantry?
Well, I was thinking moose's tooth. I was thinking something that was real, not, you know, Pizza Hut. But, or whatever.
That's more than $5.
I think she's talking moose's tooth.
I, I was just saying.
Yeah, that's worth $5.
I think it's more than $5.
All right, all right. We'll get, we'll get some food and we'll figure out some way to date for it.
So you'll denounce that night?
Right, okay.
I promise to pay my fair share, okay? Is that paraded against what I eat, or is that paraded against?
Simply showing.
This is way too complicated.